Good afternoon, everyone. Today is September 12, 2023. This is a City of Prescott City Council voting meeting. Mayor Protem, do we have any introductions or announcements?
You know, Mayor, in fact, today we do have introductions in addition to announcements. I want to introduce folks to our two new councilmember elects, Ted Gamboji, stand to be recognized Ted, and Lois Furth, stand to be recognized. They didn't realize when they won that this was part of the hazing ritual, so welcome. Announcements. First, the city has a new dedicated water website, preskittwater.com. You can find more information on ways to conserve water, the rebates that are available, and much, much more. Please be sure to check it out. I know you'll find it to be a very valuable resource. Second, the City of Prescott is still offering the free annual Bulk Item Collection Event during September and October to assist residential trash customers with disposal of bulky items that do not fit in the regular trash or recycle containers. However, if you're a Monday trash pickup person, your time has already come and gone, just so you know. The week beginning September 18 will be the Bulk Item Collection for those whose trash is picked up on Wednesdays. Place all items on the curb by 6:00 a.m. on Monday of your fall Bulk Item Cleanup Week. Any and all items left at or near the curb could be thrown away as part of the event collection, so don't accidentally leave your kid's bicycle like I have done. Please, for more information, you can always go to preskittrecycles.com or call 928-777-1116. We also want to thank everyone who attended the recent open house for the 2025 Prescott General Plan. Even if you did not make it, we still want to hear from you. So please be sure to go to planprescott.com to learn more about the Prescott General Plan for 2025 and to take the survey and share your ideas and opinions. And finally, the State Route 89, SR 89 Roadway Infrastructure Improvements Project is in the early planning stages. The project includes infrastructure improvements along SR 89 between the Fippen Roundabout and the Willow Lake Roundabout, with the potential of additional roadway improvements. We are interested in comments from the community regarding this project. While there is no formal design in place for this project, a conceptual layout has been produced to illustrate the potential roadway improvements being considered. To view the layout, learn more about the project, and take the project survey, please visit sr89improvements.com. We will host a community open house meeting for this project during -- to go into greater detail on this project, Wednesday, October 4 from 4:30 p.m. to 6:00 p.m. at the Adult Center of Prescott located at 1280 East Rossar. You can also sign up to receive future e-newsletters on the project by emailing a request to news@sr89improvements.com. And I know I've talked to Tim Sherwood recently on the radio. His goal is to hit 2,000 respondents on that survey. So if you haven't taken the survey, take it. If your friends or neighbors haven't taken the survey, please take it. Also, you do not have to be a Prescott resident to take the survey. Thank you.
And I'd like to add that we have a couple of great WWII veterans who have just passed their centennial birthdays. I was fortunate enough to be able to attend a birthday party for Jerry Welna, who served in both the Atlantic and the Pacific Theaters on a couple of tin cans, and those are known as the Destroyers in the Navy. He turned 100 on September 3. And we have Al Chaney, who is a member of the United States Army Air Corps, who will be 103 on March 19 -- on March -- on September 19. So big shout out to those two great local veterans. We'll now have an -- We'll now have an invocation from Linda Bennett with the Church of Jesus Christ of Latter-day Saints, Groom Creek Ward, followed by the Pledge of Allegiance by Councilwoman Cantelme.
Our most kind and gracious heavenly father, we are so grateful to have the privilege of living in such a beautiful part of thy creation. We dedicate this meeting that all those who are in positions of leadership might be guided with the knowledge and the wisdom and the discernment to preserve our freedoms, to preserve the beauty and the resources of this earth for the generations to come, that they'll make the tough decisions of balancing the opportunities for employment and the opportunities for protection of our citizens with protection of the earth. We're so grateful to live in a land where we have the freedom to elect leaders who will be responsive to the will of the people and thankful that we have leaders that do listen, help us as an electorate to be informed, to be educated, and to participate to the best of our ability, we pray in the name of Jesus Christ.
We'll do the Pledge of Allegiance.
Pledge of allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic which stands, one nation under God, indivisible, liberty, and justice for all.
Thank you, Councilwoman. We'll now have a roll call, please.
Mayor Good.
Present.
Mayor Protem Montoya.
I am here.
Councilwoman Cantelme.
Here.
Councilman Moore.
Here.
Councilmember Rusing.
Here.
Councilman Sishka.
Here.
And Councilwoman Tenney.
Yes.
All are present.
Very good. We have three proclamations to begin the meeting today. The first one is the Team Anne Nokwesi Day, which will be presented by Councilman Sishka. The mayor gave me this proclamation because he wanted to see how many times I'd get tongue-tied. So are there any representatives from the team here? Come on down. Please, come over here and stand with me. This is a celebration. Okay, now you guys are going to have to help me with some pronunciations here.
Manny.
All right.
That's Anne Nokwesi.
Anne Nokwesi. Okay. Thank you.
Awahali would be the planet.
Awahali? Okay.
Sure.
Awahali?
There it is.
Okay. So it's Go'you.
Nokwesi.
Anne.
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 Okay. This is a proclamation honoring Team Anne Nokwesi. Whereas strong science, technology, engineering, and mathematics, better known as STEM, education programs are vital to the intellectual and economic future of the City of Prescott, the state of Arizona, and the United States of America as a whole. And whereas the indigenous communities of North America and their languages and cultures have been traditionally underrepresented in the STEM fields and specifically in the permanent recognition and naming of astrum -- all right. Astronomical bodies. And whereas the sharing and promotion of the languages, cultures, and traditions of the indigenous communities is imperative to the socioeconomic advancement of humanity as a whole. And whereas the Museum of Indigenous People is the only museum in the greater Prescott area devoted to the culture and art of native people with the mission to instill understanding and respect for the indigenous cultures of the southwest. And whereas Embry-Riddle Aeronautical University has been a presence in the Prescott area since 1978 and distinguished as a world leader in aviation and aerospace higher education. And whereas the Northern Arizona Astronomical Consortium is dedicated to the continual advancement of STEM education in and around the greater Prescott area. And whereas members of these organizations, as well as amateur and professional astronomers, educators, students, and business leaders from all around the county of Yavapai convened for the purpose of submitting names from the oral histories of the Cherokee people to be permanently recognized by the International Astronomical Union. I got it. For the exoplanet star system, Gliese 436b. And whereas the International Astronomical Union announced on June 7, 2023, that the names Nokwesi, meaning star, and Awahali, meaning eagle, will forever be recorded and catalogued for said star and exoplanet. And whereas the Anne Nokwesi Project is the first such regional collaboration of its kind aiming to promote indigenous culture and STEM education through continued outreach events and promotions. Now therefore, Phil Good, Mayor of Prescott, in recognition of the outstanding contributions of Team Anne Nokwesi, does gladly hereby proclaim September 12, 2023, today, as Anne Nokwesi Day in the City of Prescott and encourages all citizens to thank the members of Team Anne Nokwesi and applaud them for their dedicated service to their community as they continue to share this and other stories, history, art, and culture from our indigenous communities and promote the values of STEM education. How did I do?
Good job.
So, thank you very much.
Wato. Thank you.
And please say a few words.
Wato, which is Cherokee for "thank you." Yeah, it's -- this is pretty doggone cool. They only chose one out of the United States, and it was right here in Prescott. So hats off to the Prescott community and to our team that put this together. I have a liberal arts degree. The real scientists are like right here. So I say wato to all of you and wato to our team. And hopefully, we can have ourselves a good time. And also to the council, and I'll have enough of them after I do a head count. We'd like to present -- we made our own little NASA patch having to do with this. So we're going to deliver one of these to each of the councilmembers. And yeah, wato. Again, thank you for this honor. Again, thank you, wato.
Well, I think my proclamation is going to be a little easier to do. This is a proclamation designating September 17 through the 23 as Constitution Week. I know in the media over the last, I don't know, year or more, we keep hearing about the threats to our democracy. Well, guess what? We don't have a democracy. We have a constitutional republic. So it's a republic that we vote representatives to represent us and to make laws, both locally, statewide, and nationally. But all those laws are protected by the Bill of Rights and the foundation of our country, which is our constitution. So I always make a point. I always carry a copy of the Constitution with me all the time. And that way, when somebody says, you know what? We have a right to this or that. And I'll say, man, I must have read this Constitution a couple hundred times. I didn't see that part of it. Can you show me where that is? But I think it's wonderful that we recognize the drafting of the Constitution, and it took nine months for it to be ratified. So it truly was the birth of our nation. So this is for Constitution Week, September 17 through the 23, 2023. Whereas September 17, 2023 marks the 236th anniversary of the drafting of the Constitution of the United States of America at the Constitution Convention. And whereas it is fitting and proper to officially recognize the patriotic celebrations which will commemorate this occasion. And whereas Public Law 915 guarantees the issuing of a proclamation each year by the President of the United States of America designating September 17 through September 23 as Constitution Week. Now therefore, I feel good, Mayor of the City of Prescott, Arizona, to hereby proclaim the week of September 17 through September 23 as Constitution Week in the City of Prescott. Is there anybody here that want to take charge of this wonderful proclamation that looks almost like the original paper from the Constitution?
Very good.
Maybe not.
Yes, thank you so much.
Please.
Thank you. Hi, everybody. I'm Melanie K. Relle, and I'm a member of the General George Crook Chapter of the National Society of the Daughters of the American Revolution. And I want to thank you very much and the councilmembers for this proclamation. I'm sure you all remember from your history class that the Constitution was signed back in September of 1787. And in 1955, some years later, the National Society of the DAR petitioned Congress to set aside the week of September 17 through the 23 to commemorate the Constitution so that we remember our forefathers and mothers who fought so hard and sacrificed for our country, for our Constitution, so that we remember that the Constitution is the foundation of our great heritage and of our government. And so, yeah, so we just are very happy to be able to celebrate it, and the proclamation is part of that celebration. And just by the way, on September 17 at 1:00 p.m., which is 4:00 p.m. in Philadelphia, our county courthouse bell is going to ring for a minute at 1:00 as part of the Bells Across America program. So all the bells will be ringing simultaneously to remind us of the signing of the Constitution. So thank you so much.
Thank you.
Appreciate it. Oh, you're going to give a picture? Oh, okay. Thank you. Thank you.
I think we have one more, don't we?
I would like to invite members of the community in the audience for the Prescott Highland Games to come forward. Welcome. Thank you. I've been asked to read the proclamation, Prescott Highland Games in Celtic Fair Week, September 18 through 26, 2023. Whereas the officers and the Board of Directors of the Prescott Area Celtic Society have elected to bring the 17th Annual Prescott Highland Games in Celtic Fair to Watson Lake Park, Lock Watson, on September 23, 2023, and September 24, 2023. And whereas the residents of Scottish and Celtic descent have made substantial contributions to our community, the state of Arizona, and to our country. And whereas the promotion of goodwill among all people of the Prescott area can be achieved by a broader understanding and education about the culture and contributions of all citizens. And whereas this Scottish Celtic festival will display excellent examples of this culture, including Highland dance, Scottish heavy athletics, bagpipe and drum bands, Scottish clans, Scottish and Celtic foods, beverages, and merchandise, live entertainment, education. And whereas the Prescott Highland Games in Celtic Fair will bring thousands of participants and guests intent on preserving and displaying their heritage for all the people of Prescott to enjoy. Now therefore, Phil Good, Mayor of the City of Prescott, and on behalf of the City Council, do hereby proclaim September 18 through the 26, 2023 as Prescott Highlands Games and Celtic Fair Week in the City of Prescott and recognize the Prescott Highland Games and Celtic Fair for their commitment to bring Scots and the people of Scottish and Celtic heritage together for the furtherance of appreciation for the cultural diversity of Prescott and the Prescott area. So I'd like to present this to you. Proclamation? You're welcome. Why don't you say a few words?
Put me in front of a microphone. I might not stop. I want to say thank you to Mayor Phil Good and all councilmembers for this proclamation. I've been a part of the Games, probably not as long as everybody else, but it's been about 15 years. And I can't tell, express the gratitude that we have for the City of Prescott, as well as not only all the departments, but the Parks and Recs, to be able to have it out at Lock Watson. Everybody that comes to the Games, just can't say enough about the area, where, you know, the park where we have it, and how much the Games mean to them and how friendly that not only Prescott, but everybody is here. So they look forward to it year after year after year to come. And, you know, COVID took a little bit of a hit on -- for everybody, it's that. But it looks like we've rebounded very well. We've got more vendors and clans coming this year than we've probably had in the last probably six or seven years. So we're looking to have a really good game. We are family-oriented, as well as dog-friendly, and we invite everybody to come out and share that day with us because it's a fun thing. It's a love of actually everything that's Celtic for us that helps us put this thing on. And the people behind me work day in and out throughout the whole year to be able to put this on. And, you know, for all they do, I can't say enough, and I say thank you to everybody behind me because without them, we wouldn't be able to put these games on. So thank you very much.
Very good. That concludes our proclamations, and we'll now move on to the open call to the public.
Thank you, Mayor. The City of Prescott welcomes public engagement. Residents may comment and address the council regarding items that are not included on the posted agenda during the call to the public. If you wish to speak, please complete a green speaker card and submit it to me prior to the meeting being convened. As a reminder, speakers are limited to four minutes, and the call to the public will be limited to 40 minutes in total with the following stipulations. Citizens are limited to addressing council on the same topic only four times in total. If a topic has been addressed more than five times by different speakers, the mayor may limit future discussion on the topic. And topics of a primarily national concern may be limited at the discretion of the mayor. I do have two comment cards today. The first is from Elaine Garley.
Hello, I'm Elaine Garley, and I live in Summit Point Estates. Thank you to the City Council members for letting me speak. Last October, I attended my first council meeting because councilperson Eric Moore recommended I attend. And thank you. I requested the crosswalk at Senator and Haisley. Today, I am here to thank the entire council, the Pedestrian Bicycle and Traffic Advisory Committee, and Ian Mattingly for the completion of the Senator and Haisley Crosswalk. The walkers and the dog walkers really appreciate the flashing crosswalk signs. It makes it easier to go to Acker Park and the Plaza. We wish more drivers would actually slow down and obey the flashing lights. Estimates are only about 50% of the drivers do slow down or stop. As drivers come down the hill from the Groom Creek area, the majority are exceeding the speed limit, which is 25 miles an hour. Most are going 35 to 50. Yes, there is a 25 mile an hour sign between Nathan and Haisley. They don't slow down. Also, going the other direction, Mount Vernon to Senator Highway, the last speed limit sign is between Carlton and the sharp bend at Senator High -- where Senator Highway begins. It is 6/10 of a mile to Haisley and no speed limit signs. Yes, I understand that there are state and federal regulations and guidelines for speed limit placement. We need another sign in this stretch. Two weeks ago, leaving my home as I turned south from Haisley to Senator Highway, no cars were coming down the hill. Before I reached Palmer Hill, a car was one to two feet away from the rear of my SUV. I held my speed. Since the start of the Juniper and Karen Water Main Replacement Project, your speed signs aren't posted in the area. Please post them again. This morning, I left a message with Sergeant Bartow to start using your speed signs on Senator again. I know not everyone would agree with me on this. I welcome the Prescott Police to show a precedence on Senator Highway again. The city could make some money in the early morning or in the evening hours. Thank you for your help.
Good afternoon. I'm Gwen Parker, and I live at 511 Dougherty Street here in Prescott. And I've been there for approximately 30 years at that location. So I'm here today to talk to you about the fair that went on over the weekend. And I just wanted to bring this to your attention so you could please be aware of what's happening. It was really, really awful. The music that they played, the bass of the music. I want everybody to have a wonderful time, you know, because it's a fun event and everything. But the bass of the music was -- I don't know about you guys, but I can't deal with that. You know, it's just that boom, boom, boom. And it went on all weekend long. So it was really, you know, not a very good thing. And I know a lot of my neighbors felt the same way because we talked to each other. I did call the police and ask them if they would be nice enough to go over there and just ask them if they could turn just the bass down. But they weren't willing to do that. So that never happened. So we endured the pounding and the, you know, all weekend long. So I wanted you to be aware of that. And then Saturday night, when we came home, there were cars parked all along Gail Gardner Way, even though there are no parking signs along Gail Gardner there. And of course, no one was enforcing that, the no parking. So it was -- it was, you know, I've endured the fair, and I love fairs and carnivals and all that. And I, you know, I'm all about it. But it was really crowded this weekend, and it was just dangerous along that road, for sure. So I know that with the expansion that is trying to happen, I just want you guys to be aware of what's happening. You know, this is just the fair, four days of the fair, and it was really -- traffic was backed up. You couldn't turn -- I mean, it was really an ordeal. So I do have pictures, if you're interested. Took pictures. So anyway, I just wanted to bring it to your attention so that, you know, we kind of know what's going on in the area and that the Gail Gardner neighborhood can be heard. So I know, Brandon, if anybody wants to ask any questions, we're happy to, you know, to do that for you. So thank you for your time.
That's all, Mayor.
Very good. Thank you. We will move on to the consent agenda. Does any member of the council want to pull any items off the consent agenda?
Yes, Mayor, I'd like to pull item 8, B, as in boy.
Very well. I'll entertain a motion on the remaining items.
Sorry, Mayor. I move that we approve our consent agenda items A, C, and D.
Second.
We have a motion in a second. Any other comments?
Passes 7-0.
Very good. Councilmember Rusing, 8B.
Thank you. The reason why I pulled this was because there's been some discussion by the public as to whether or not this -- forming this committee and combining all these other committees, actually dissolving them, was -- actually dissolving them, was going to somehow limit public participation. Because I know in the Art in Public Places Committee, I mean, it's a pretty big committee. So I would like to have city staff explain the rationale behind it, and how often it will meet, and whether or not it will include an open call to the public element. Because, as you know, having an open call to the public raises our awareness about what's going on concerning issues, and then we can ask to put it on the agenda of the committee. So, thank you.
Well, I am happy to address those questions, Councilmember Rusing. As staff and council, and probably many of our citizens are aware, the city of Prescott has 26 active boards, commissions, and committees. This is a significantly high number of boards and commissions, and requires a significant amount of staff time and resources to manage all of these boards and commissions. This is something that I have been working in close alignment with the city attorney's office on, with regard to trying to consolidate some of the functions of our boards. A number of our boards meet on a consistent basis. For example, the Planning and Zoning Commission meets a couple of times a month. Obviously, the city council is required to meet at least twice monthly. However, a number of our boards, some that are statutorily required, only meet once a year. We can't do anything about those boards, because they are statutorily required. However, boards like the Accrithrust Board, the Art in Public Places Committee, the Library Advisory Board, and the Parks and Recreation Advisory Boards meet on an as-needed basis, and have a lot of crossover when it comes to allocation of staff time and resources. And so based on all of those things, staff determined that consolidation of these boards would provide a little bit of a relief, and also provide an opportunity to refocus these boards, and enable them to meet on a set schedule, so in accordance with the resolution and the memo. This new board will meet on a quarterly basis, at a minimum. If additional meetings are required, those can take place. There will be no lack of public involvement. The public is still welcome to attend this meeting, just as they are all of our other boards and committees. And with regard to a call to the public, that's at the discretion of the chair and the vice chair for each of our boards and commissions. I believe only one of our active boards and committees has an open call to the public. That doesn't mean that the public can't comment on agendized items. It means that comment on non-agendized items is limited. Joe, do you have anything that you wanted to add?
No, I would just say that we did look at the various committees and commissions, the intent being to reduce a little bit the 26, but a lot of them have statutory requirements, and these four specifically did not. That's not to say they don't have a purpose, they do, but by combining them, one board will be able to take care of the purposes of all four of them. They'll continue to serve the same purpose, but as one board that meets regularly, and still make the same decisions, though.
I'd also like to comment that-
Mayor Protem.
Thank you, Mayor. I guess my question is, given, my understanding of the Accrithrust Board is that it only meets usually about maybe once or twice a year, so consolidating that board makes sense to me. The Arts in Public Places, it seems like that, that board also, to my understanding, doesn't meet as frequently. My concern would be combining the Library Advisory Board and the Parks and Rec Advisory Board. They seem to be, those two boards seem to meet more regularly, and I guess I wonder, in boards that I've been a part of, not on the city, but in boards, when you combine two mission objectives like that, you may think you're saving time, but what, in effect, is potentially going to happen is a longer meeting that ends up being a bigger drag on staff time, potentially. And I just, I'm not questioning the decision by this, I'm just curious if the thought has entered that, what is the most effective way to do that? And I guess my other question is, is there a lot of overlap between Parks and Rec and the library, in terms of the issues they're taking? Or do you envision that this board will take up, maybe one meeting will be entirely Parks and Rec, one meeting will be entirely library, et cetera? I'm just, those are my questions, that I just kind of wanted to get a sense of.
Councilmember Rusing. Well, why don't you go ahead and address that?
Oh, thanks. So I was just responding to the quarterly meeting, we'd anticipate covering kind of a little bit of everything and getting into it. There's also meetings as needed, and I would anticipate that those as-needed meetings would cover kind of just one topic. And they'd come in rarely, or occasionally, and it would probably cover one topic. The regular meetings, though, would cover the broad spectrum.
And I did, Mayor Protem, want to address your question about how often Parks and Rec and the Library Advisory Board are meeting. Excuse me. The Parks and Recreation Board meets on an as-needed basis, and the Library Advisory Board typically meets quarterly, but they're also on an as-needed basis. So the last time they met was in April of this year.
I appreciate the clarity.
Councilmember Rusing.
I'd also like to mention that this year, we have the Charter Committee, and we also have the General Plan Committee, too, added to our usual boards and commissions, and the general plans once every 10 years, but that has been a huge amount of work for the city staff. And also, the Charter amendments, they came up with 13 amendments to get them on the ballot this year, so-
I hate to interrupt you, but that's not relevant to this item.
I was just emphasizing how much work city staff has been doing with the boards. So, thank you, I just wanted to have some clarification and answer some questions.
Councilmember Shishka.
Thanks, Mayor. Excuse me. How many folks will be on this committee?
It'll be a seven-member committee, Councilman Shishka.
Seven members. You know, one of the issues, on the surface, it looks good, because I think that, you know, these committees meet infrequently. However, something like the Art in Public Places Commission was pretty much made up of artists. And so, you know, are we doing justice to Art in Public Places by having this, you know, solve-everything committee voting on those kind of things? So specialization is what I'm kind of concerned with. That would be my only concern.
So I would just like to point out that the Art in Public Places, as you noted, was initially formed with a resolution with a preference that representatives come from a variety of different focus areas. For example, gallery owners, museum professionals, art educators, et cetera. I will tell you that over the years, because that resolution was formed quite a while ago, not all of the members meet those qualifications. And I would venture to guess that a large part of the reason for that is because the council Subcommittee on Appointments is reviewing so many applications for so many different boards on such a consistent basis, that oftentimes, some of those requirements and preferences can get a little bit lost in the shuffle. We could certainly add in language, and Joe and I can kind of speak to how we could do this specifically, but we could add in language that there, you know, are requirements for a certain number of members of the boards, that's not an uncommon thing to happen, but I would say that over the course of time, and different members on the Subcommittee on Appointments, sometimes those don't always get adhered to.
All right, thank you.
Councilmember Rusing.
Thank you. Also, there's a citizens group out there called Protect, and I've been working with them, and they felt that the city needed a committee to address the effects of climate change and drought.
Again, that's not relevant to this issue.
Well, it is, because I was under the impression-
It's not relevant, you're out of order. So I will say that, from my perspective, I've received a lot of comments about the vast number of boards, commissions, and committees that the city has. And there is a substantial staff burden to make sure that there's always a member of staff available to take minutes, to craft those minutes, and then have to present the minutes at the next meeting. So I've either been a liaison, or attended virtually every one of these committee meetings, and I agree that they are very occasional, and I believe that having a combined committee would be available to discuss the necessary concerns that each one of these current committees would have, but more on a somewhat regular basis. So certainly, the agendas can be designed so that specific concerns are being addressed by the committee itself, and that we have appropriate representation on the committee to become knowledgeable on the issues that have to happen. I know when I was liaison for the Accrithrust Board, usually, once a year, the amount that was going to be allocated to youth, music, and other music events, obviously Akronite, we would look at applications from different organizations for allocations, and then review those applications, and then an award was made, and then that was it for the rest of the year. So it's really hard to justify having that type of staff time assigned to, or committees that really have a very, very limited responsibility. And I think this is a way of consolidating them, and I think as long as the chairs and the vice chairs and the memberships handle their agendas well, that does allow the public, of course, to attend these meetings and be able to comment on issues on the agenda.
Thank you, Mayor. And if I could piggyback off of some of what you just said, I did want to add, too, that as Joe and I have looked at these, and Katie and I have talked about this as well, I had a conversation with both Joe Baines and Roger Saft, whose departments are kind of over all four of these committees, and they're in support of the consolidation of these committees. And I've also, in those conversations, spoken to the fact that someone from my office will be the staff liaison for this newly-formed committee, and will confer with both Roger and Joe on a quarterly basis to make sure that all of the items that are necessary for this board to look at are being addressed.
Very good. Any other comments or concerns relevant to this issue? Mayor Protem.
I was just going to make a motion to adopt item 8B from the consent agenda.
Second. Have a motion as second? Please vote.
Passes 7-0.
Very well, we'll move on to item 9A, Consent Ordinance.
Adoption of Ordinance Number 2023-1839, accepting a public utility easement from both Prescott College and WSH Hospitality LLC, in ordinance of the mayor and council of the city of Prescott, Yavapai County, Arizona, authorizing the acceptance of a public utility easement agreement from Prescott College, Inc., and WSH Hospitality LLC, authorizing the mayor and staff to execute any and all documents to effectuate said acceptance.
Yes, sir, we just want to go straight to a vote. We haven't heard from you yet, Gwen.
If you would like Gwen to come up and explain, she certainly can do that.
It feels like left out or anything.
Well, if you just want me to say hello, I can do that, too. This is a pretty straightforward request. The city is being granted an easement by these two entities, where you can see on the map there, the small red area. The owners installed a fire hydrant there, that's the purpose of the easement. It's accessed from both properties, therefore, we have an easement across both properties. Pretty straightforward. All publicly maintained infrastructure must be in a 20-foot wide easement, and that's what they are granting us at no cost.
Anybody have questions or concerns for Gwen? And I'll entertain a motion.
Mayor, I move to adopt Consent Ordinance Item 9A.
Second.
Motion is second, please vote. Thank you very much. We'll move on to the liquor license applications.
Public hearing in consideration for a new Series 12 Restaurant Liquor License application from Vitaleana Alcatar, applicant for Metiera Mexicana, location 1317 East Gurley Street. The application fees have been paid, and the signs have been posted for the required 20 days. Staff has reviewed the application and determined that it is in compliance, and no public comments have been received.
Is the applicant in, present? Oh, I know this is, I'm sure it's going to be another great Mexican restaurant, and we used to have one there, one, a number of years ago, at the Prescottonian. So, looking forward to that. I'll entertain a motion.
Mayor, I move to close the public hearing.
Second.
Motion is second, please vote.
Mayor, I move to approve liquor license number 249910 for a new Series 12 Restaurant Liquor License application for Metiera Mexicana, location 1317 East Gurley Street.
Second.
Motion is second, please vote. Very good, we'll move on to the next one.
Public hearing in consideration for a new Series 12 Restaurant Liquor License application from Amanda Mae Adam, applicant for Baron Dragon, location 334 South Monizuma Street. The application fees have been paid, and the signs have been posted for the required 20 days. Staff has reviewed the application and determined that it is in compliance, and no public comments have been received.
Is the applicant present? Come on up, tell us about your new establishment.
Well, that's my husband and my chef here with me today, as well, but they're too shy, apparently. Yeah, we're, I'm just going to grab that. We're Baron Dragon, we're a cafe, we had started as a little mobile food truck downtown, and now we're going brick and mortar. The location is the old Rock House across from Bill's Grill, and we're really excited about it. We are going to be a cafe that carries a lot of books inside for people, and we're doing dinner service Thursday, Friday, and Saturday nights as well. And our chef's amazing, so you guys have to come try the food. That's really it, we're just excited to provide a new place for people to come, have great coffee and great food, and great drinks.
So the source for the name?
Oh, after our kids' nicknames. Bear is my little bear, Bridget Bear, and our son Drake the Dragon, and it just gave us the literary theme we were looking for, yeah.
Yeah, we were speculating, we thought it might have something to do with Dungeons and Dragons, or The Hobbit, or something like that.
Oh, we've got some Hobbit-themed things going on, for sure, yeah. It's just that literary theme we were looking for, and we did have some Dungeons and Dragons folks come down quite often because of that, but-
So I guess other people thought the same thing.
Yeah.
Well, thank you very much, and good luck with your new location there.
Thank you. Thank you, Mayor. Thank you.
I'll entertain a motion.
Mayor, I move to close the public hearing.
Second.
Motion is second, please vote.
Mayor, I move to approve liquor license number 252839 for a new Series 12 Restaurant Liquor License application for- Liquor License application for Baron Dragon, location 334 South Monizuma Street.
Second.
Motion is second. Please vote.
Passes 7-0.
Move on to our regular agenda at this point.
Thank you, Mayor. The first item on the agenda is for the resolution for the acceptance of a surface water improvement grant from the Arizona Department of Environmental Quality, and this is a grant that will be used to evaluate 25 green stormwater infrastructure sites and develop a prioritization list for the city to then go and seek some of these grants. So we have Matt Colleen, our environmental coordinator, here to discuss them.
Good afternoon, Mayor and Council.
Thank you, Matt. I know this was originally going to be on our consent agenda, but I decided to put it on regular because I know there's a lot of people in the community who are concerned about water, and in this case, the quality of the water. So being able to apply for and get this kind of a grant certainly helps to improve our water quality, and I felt it was worthy of having it discussed. So please proceed.
Thank you, Mayor. I appreciate the opportunity to do so. In addition to the water quality improvements these types of features can have in our downtown and impervious areas, it can also address a number of other issues that have come to light more recently. So you have Quad City Climate Collaborative, it's always a mouthful, have identified this as one of their adaptation strategies to deal with many of the issues we're facing through climate change realities. In addition to this, this is a way of beautifying parts of our city, reducing potable water use in landscaped areas, reducing heat island effect. This also grant focuses on what has been identified as a disadvantaged area by the EPA's Environmental Justice Toolkit, a screening tool. And so we brought that into it so that every portion of our committee, a community, may have the benefit of these types of features. And with that, I'd be happy to take any questions regarding our grant application or how it came to be.
Councilmember Rusing.
Thank you. Hi, Matt. I'm excited to hear that these are green stormwater basins, which I expect they're supposed to mimic nature. Could you go into more detail about this?
Yeah, that's exactly what they're doing. We're essentially reinserting the ecosystem services that nature provides back into an impervious and concrete jungle that represents our downtown area in particular. And so what this does is allows that first flush of pollutants that come across the parking lots, the sidewalks, the roadways, rather than going directly into our creeks and lakes, they're going to be diverted into these basins. They're often referred to as rain gardens as well. And one of the cool, pardon me, one of the cool features about this is that many of the things that we would consider pollutants to Watson Lake, as it's pictured behind me, are actually beneficial to the plants that would be put into these basins. The nitrogen, the phosphorus in particular, are nutrients that otherwise would have to be fertilized in many more traditional landscape settings. We're pulling that out of the pollutant stream and using it to beautify our city.
Well, thank you for all your efforts, and I hope to see more of these projects in the future.
Mayor Pro Tem?
Thank you, Mayor. Matt, I had a question. You mentioned the process for applying for grants. I'm curious if you can tell me like how that, how you guys found out about this grant, and then who was responsible for applying for it, and what that process looked like.
In this case, we were somewhat fortuitous. I got late notice of this one. It was a Department of Environmental Quality grant. Oftentimes, these are federal dollars, they're so-called pass-through to the state to then disseminate across the different organizations. I was on vacation in July when this came out, but happened to see that it was here. So we had a pretty rushed two weeks, and during that time, we were able to get in front of you to seek that opportunity to apply for it on July 11th. And then myself and Nicole Metro out of Public Works has been instrumental in really putting this package together in a short order of time, but to really hit on some of the key points that they were looking for in this planning grant. We also worked with a consultant that we anticipate bringing on board later on. They're actively working with Prescott Valley on some of their stormwater recharge. So the idea of maintaining some regional collaboration, in this case via the consultant, was desirable as well. They also happen to be on our on-call list as well, and they also wrote the Pima County Low Impact or Green Stormwater Infrastructure Manual recently. So it was a rushed process, but we were able to get through everything and, you know, had a conversation with ADDQ directly to make sure we were hitting those key points they were looking for in the screening process.
Wow. Well, so thank you for, it sounds like part of what you are describing here is that part of what you're doing over at Public Works is being on the lookout for opportunities like this, even when you're not being paid to do so. So I just, on behalf of the city, I want to say thank you for your dedication, for looking for additional funding opportunities like this. It's important to know that we have a lot of talented people in the city of Prescott who are looking at those opportunities. Thank you.
Thank you.
Councilman Tenny.
Thank you, Mayor. Yeah, Matt, I want to commend you as well for taking charge of the grant application process. We've had some discussion recently about something that much smaller cities do, which is consolidating all grant writing under one additional position that we might add. I'm glad to see that we've been functioning well and effectively, having experts within various departments do the grant writing, and that's brought in, remind me, City Manager Gregory, over a half of, half of a million, more than that, five, excuse me, what was the amount that you shared with us earlier, just this last fiscal year?
Just in the last fiscal year, I think there's a proposal for us to go after about 14 million in grants.
Okay, fantastic. Yeah, so a substantial amount, and the model that we're using is apparently working very effectively with experts within those departments being able to speak directly to the, to the grant requirements. So again, congratulations. Great job. Thanks for this, and looking forward to seeing how it improves the water quality in our creeks and lakes.
Well, and you should be on the lookout because many of our opportunity or candidate sites involve PUSD properties, and I think there's a great potential for partnerships there to reduce potable water use, as well as provide science-based curriculum for your students as well.
I love the sound of that.
Very good. I'll entertain a motion.
Mayor, I move to adopt Resolution Number 2023-1867.
Second.
Motion is second. Please vote. There we go.
Passes 7-0.
Thank you.
All right. Item 11B.
Thank you, Mayor. This next item is for a contract with CLM Earthmovers for the Garden and Western Sewer and Street Improvement Project, and we have Tim Sherwood here to present this item.
Good afternoon, Mayor and Council. Tim Sherwood, Capital Program Manager, Public Works. The item I have for you today is a project at the Garden and Western Intersection. It includes Garden Street from Gurley north to the end of the pavement at Prescott College, and Western Avenue from Grove to the intersection of Garden Street. The work will include removal, replacement, installation of new sanitary sewer pipes and manholes, as well as removal, replacement, and installation of new concrete sidewalk, ADA ramps, driveways, curb gutter, storm drain structures, and asphalt pavement. The sewer portion of the project was identified by our wastewater department about a year and a half ago as a deficiency in our system, and Garden and Western were both identified in our pavement management program as in need of reconstruction. So the staff determined it would be in the most practical use of funds to combine the projects together, so they were designed in-house by our in-house design team and combined into one project. The project was advertised on June 25th and July 2nd of 2023. We received two bids on August 3rd. Public Works is recommending award of the low bid to CLM Earthmovers of Prescott in the amount of $1,480,248.85. The estimate for the project was $1,366,632. Staff has received written confirmation of the bid from CLM Earthmovers. Verification of their license, bonding, references, and past performances of Public Works projects has been completed and deemed satisfactory. The city's standard construction contract would be used for the project, and funding for the project is budgeted in FY '24 in both the streets and wastewater funds. And with that, I would be happy to take any questions.
Councilman Tenny.
Mayor, I'm sorry. I forgot to press my no longer requesting to speak button. I'm good. This one makes sense to me, and I'm in favor of it.
Okay, Tim, you're off the hook.
I was ready.
Any other questions or comments? Councilmember Rusing.
Thank you. This is one of our iconic older neighborhoods. I love that area, Garden Street. Older homes, bungalows, Victorians, and there's some older trees in the area. Are you going to be removing any trees and doing some landscaping, or is this going to be a concrete jungle?
This is, this is, there's no trees planned for removal on this project. It's one of the older streets of Prescott. It has a tremendous amount of right-of-way. The parkways are very wide, so there's no impact. There's sidewalks down both sides of Garden Street. There's a sidewalk on the north side of Western, as well as area around Yavapai College. So no, other than connecting some of that stuff, but there is no planned tree removal or really any impacts into the, into the parkways.
Okay. Thank you. Appreciate it.
Any other comments or concerns? I'll entertain a motion.
Mayor, I move to approve City Contract Number 2024-064.
Second.
Motion is second. Do we have any other public comment for the rest of the?
I have not received any comment cards, no, Mayor.
Please vote.
Passes 7-0.
Okay, Item 11C.
All right. Thank you. The, this item 11C is for an approval of another contract, this one with Civil Tech Engineering for the Design of Hornet Drive Drainage Improvements Phase Two, and we have Brian Reese here to present on this item.
Thank you, City Manager. Hello, Mayor. Hello, City Council. I am Brian Reese with City of Prescott Public Works, and today I have for you, for your consideration, the Hornet Drive Phase Two improvements. So a little bit of background on this, Yavapai Hills, or Hornet Drive within Yavapai Hills, I should clarify. The Yavapai Hills subdivision started plating around 1974, and up until about 2005, very little drainage management was considered in this project, created drainage issues that we've had to deal with for a considerable amount of time. Some of the drainage issues are related to lot-to-lot drainage, non-curb streets issues, issues with drainage in common areas, and the lack of supported off-site storm channels have all contributed to issues over this, over this time period. If we could go to the drainage exhibit, please? So this is a drainage exhibit, kind of showing the area of interest at this point along the Hornet Drive corridor. In general, the drainage for the area, just to give you some perspective, runs from west to east, and then in general, from south to north. So water is routed along the street corridors and in some storm drain corridors, and all is, pretty much all of it is concentrated in the drainage basin that's pointed out at the center of the exhibit. In 2011, the city received multiple complaints from residents of stormwater issues, and a Yavapai Hills master drainage plan was created at that time to try to see if they could resolve some of those issues. Back in 2017, 2018, the city again received drainage complaints after some, some large storm events, which prompted the city to engage with Civil Tech, and they created what was called Phase One of the Hornet Drive Drainage Improvements. From that, the city went ahead and evaluated and constructed three drainage components. They're shown on this map, and I'm sorry for the scale of it, but you can kind of see the little red lines, and they indicate the three vein grates that were, oh, thank you very much. Yeah, the three vein grates that were constructed from curb to curb along Hornet Drive to gather and collect water. Yes. And included with those is our three outfall pipes that go into the various storms, storm drain swells that go to the drainage basins. So back earlier this year, during our very wet winter and spring events, we started receiving more calls from residents about flooding issues along Hornet Drive, too. We conducted an evaluation in-house and also with the support of the consultant who did the Phase One study. And basically, in the upstream portions where the water is being generated, there's a lot of very steep streets and relatively small drop inlets, five and a half foot in length. The momentum of the water tends to cause the water to bypass the inlets and continue forward, so we're not getting as much collection as we would hope for into the storm drain facilities, and the water is concentrating on the downstream ends and gathering. As it goes to the downstream portions of the, of Hornet Drive, the streets tend to, the slopes tend to decrease. There's roll curb in that area. It's not as, it doesn't have as much capacity as a normal L curb, and hence, the water tends to leave the right-of-ways and then contributing to everything else, there's really no capacity outside of that curb-to-curb interface, at least along the downstream side, as the water would just, would just leave the, leave the right-of-way and continue down slope. So, and if we could go back to the presentation now? So we've, we've engaged back again with Civil Tech to see about looking at doing Phase Two of the storm drain improvements for this, for this project. So with them, they've, they provided us with their proposal. It's a, it's basically a general engineering proposal. I'll go quickly through these tasks. Task one is kickoff meeting and site evaluation to get the general scope of the project. Task two will be initiating conceptual options that the consultant will put together for the city to review, which will include some of the Phase Two options that were done previously, along with looking at other storm drain alternatives based on some of the information we have available now that might be more, that might be more effective. After review and consultation on that, task three, supplemental field services to provide any type of survey elevation that we might need to further conduct some of these alternatives or to evaluate them, leading into task four, 30% conceptual design and review. So preparation of improvement plans and a preliminary cost estimate to a 30% level for the city's review. Any comments that we would have would be incorporated into a 60% design. Task five being that 60% preliminary design, so the enhancement of the improvement plans to a 60% level, beginning of special provisions for any modifications to MAG or city standards, and then further enhancement of the, of the, of the cost estimate. 90% final design or pre-final design enhancement of the improvement plans and special provisions, cost estimate to that level, and preparation of a draft technical drainage memorandum. Also, at this stage, ensuring that we've met with property owners and took into account any of the information that they have on the flooding and have incorporated it well into the design at this point. And then leading into 100% final design for all of the, for all of the improvements and for the technical memorandum. Task eight includes utility coordination. The consultant will, will coordinate with the, all utilities to provide any information on as-builts, locations, sizes, to allow for the preparation of a pothole plan that could be used during the construction phase. The consultant is available to begin fairly quickly after council would approve this project. We anticipate having final design plans by March 1st, 2024. The proposal calls for a time and material contract not to exceed $71,242. Funding is available for this project through the Yavapai Flood Control District Funds. And lastly, I'd just like to, to mention that this is, this contract is only for engineering and design at this point, not for construction. So at this time, if you have any other questions, I'd be glad to try to answer for you. Oh, and here's Oh, and here's a breakdown of, of the, of the consultant's hourly fee schedule.
Mayor Broten.
Thank you, Mayor. First off, shout out to the IT people there. They were on point there. I've never seen them zoom in on something like that before. That was cool.
Sounds good.
My question is, or I guess my comment more than question is, I appreciate the, I know we've had a number of times where residents in this area have come to Call the Public here and kind of brought this issue to our attention. And I know that none of us can engage them when they do that, but I appreciate the fact that, I'm sure you are already aware of this issue, but that you were taking those concerns seriously when people are coming to Call the Public and kind of expressing those concerns. So it's nice to be able to see that when people come here for Call the Public, their comments don't just go into a black box or on a shelf somewhere, that it's almost more important, I tell people, that staff is listening than the seven of us up here who are elected, because you guys can have more of an impact on, on what happens in the neighborhood. So thank you for, I'm anxious to see what we get out of the design of this and if it's feasible. Obviously, that's going to be a whole different conversation, but I appreciate that you're taking seriously the concerns of the community.
Appreciate that. Thank you. Councilmember Rusin.
Thank you. I was just going to ask Brian if any property owners have suffered any flooding damages either to their home or to their yards landscaping?
Yes, mostly to yards and landscaping at this point. And we've had a little bit of water going into, into the, one of property owners' garage during the big event we had in May.
So this will, this will obviously prevent future events from happening?
Yeah, we're trying to target this to, to reduce those, those impacts.
Okay. Thank you.
Councilman Tenney.
Thank you, Mayor. Brian, good presentation. I appreciate it. It sounds like the funding is coming from the Yavapai County Flood Control District for the engineering. Would that be the case as well if we determined we need to do some construction here?
Yes, I do, yeah, I do believe so, maybe in FY '25.
Okay, okay. So it would be county funds that would pay for this and not specifically city funds? Fair enough?
Yes.
Councilmember Ken Tellme.
Thank you, Mayor. This question actually might be for Tim and then potentially Joe. This was platted in, approved in 1985, you said?
Plating started in 1974. It's continued all the way on.
Okay. So my question is, I'm trying to remember what year it was requirement for a topo and a grading and drainage plan. So I think that that, the 1970s predates it. But if we have a situation like this where they should have introduced in the plat a grading and drainage plan, it's obviously failed. Joe, do we have any recourse on that, on something like that because of the date?
To be honest, it depends on a lot of factors. So I would say that is it, it's a possibility in some cases, yes. I don't want to give a more definite answer than that. But yes, there is possibilities that can, but we review those designs. That's part of the process we have to do, and so that's part, our, our work in approving and reviewing that is important as well.
Yeah. On something like that, and Tim, you might know this, I think the statute of limitation is 10 years. So when they file a grading and drainage plan with you, like some of the new plats that are coming forward, do you keep track of when the, if they failed, are we documenting the date in which we start getting complaints from homeowners that something is not right?
If you don't mind, I'm going to let Tim off the hook on this one. So, you know, to answer your question, under the current codes and probably since the early to mid 90s, either the county or the city has had drainage codes in place or drainage criteria in place. Over time, those criterias change. We had much lesser criteria in terms of we would design to a two-year or a five-year or maybe a 10-year event. Today, we design to a 25-year event. You know, global climate change affects us here, too, on top of the mountain. And Yavapai Hills and the ranch areas in particular have seen multiple events where we've had small little, thank you, microburst, that's what I was looking for, in those areas specifically, multiple times in the last 10 years. So between having different kinds of criteria that didn't require us to collect as much water, having more development in the area so that water doesn't just naturally flow back out into open spaces, combined with the changes in the climate, I think are what we're seeing here today. I don't think anyone intentionally underbuilt or under, underdesigned these structures. I just believe that our environment over time has changed, and so that's what we need to address. So when we have these kinds of issues come up, staff goes out, we evaluate what we can do. Sometimes we can do fairly simple fixes. You know, when, when the original Phase One for this came out, the fix was to put these three vein grates in. And the engineers and staff were confident that it would capture as much as 70% of the water off the street until the rain came. And the street was too flat, and the water either rushed by the inlet or there was more than it could capture at the lowest point. And that's really what we're seeing here today. So we're going to go to Civil Tech. We're going to look at the options that we have for this particular instance, and we would do that in anywhere that someone brought something to our attention. Sometimes these kind of projects are brought to our attention even by our own operation staff. They don't necessarily have to come to us from a complaint from a neighborhood. This particular one did. They had some pretty impressive video. If you saw it, it was, it was, I have to say, I've seen a lot of things that was pretty impressive, how much water was actually leaving the roadway. And in this particular instance, we believe it's a combination of factors of some new development that's occurring across the street, where they're not maintaining their own drainage ditches, as well as the capacity of the street. So we're going to take a holistic view at this little area and see what we can do to make this better for the residents here. But I guess that was kind of a long answer, but the short answer is, as they come to us or we identify them, that's when we address them.
So, so going forward, though, on some of the newer plats, do we have a way to document a failure like that?
So we, without getting too specific, I can tell you that we have had failures in other parts of the city. And in those instances, we go back to the engineer of record for them to resolve that particular issue, particularly in newer developments. But again, this one's older.
Thank you. That's exactly what I was getting at. Thank you.
You're welcome.
Councilman Moore.
Thank you, Mayor. Just a quick question, and I think I already know the answer. I want to kind of piggyback onto Councilman Tenney's question. When the engineering is done and they've got a project proposed, I realize that these streets were probably originally developed by Yavapai Hills, but now they're city-owned. And so the city will be on the hook for all of the improvements, and Yavapai Hills will not be responsible for any help financially with this?
That's correct, Councilman Moore. Once we accept the infrastructure for maintenance, it's the city's responsibility to address any deficiencies.
So I would ask, considering the condition now, is that a function of poor drainage design originally? Or is it possibly settling over the years? Or is it possibly a function of drainage and erosion to get to this point?
Mayor, I think it's probably all of those things, but we're going to find that out when Civil Tech starts to look into it.
Any other questions or concerns? I'll entertain a motion.
Mayor, I move to approve city contract number 2024-072.
Second.
Motion is second. Please vote.
Thank you, Mayor. Item 11D is a contract with CLM Earth Movers LLC for miscellaneous concrete repairs Phase Two. And this is for concrete repairs throughout the city, including some of the downtown areas and the Rossar area. And Tim is here to present this item as well.
Good afternoon, Mayor and Council. Tim Sherwood, Public Works, again. This is kind of an annual project. We do it at least once a year, sometimes twice a year. It's our FY '23 miscellaneous concrete project Phase Two. We did a phase of this earlier this year, this calendar year. Project includes removal, replacement, and/or installation of new concrete sidewalks, ADA ramps, driveways, curb and gutter, and drainage scuppers at various locations throughout the city. As you see on the map, we are going to be working in the north central Prescott area, streets including Delano, Tamarack, Sequoia, Sumac, Prescott Heights, and Rossar. West Prescott will be on Skyline Drive and Thumbute Road. In the central Prescott area, LaRue and Granite Street, as well as various locations, all the little dots inside the rectangle you see there, as well as areas in some Yavapai Hills areas, Pinion Oaks, as well as the areas out by Antelope Hills. So we'll be all over the city, making various improvements to deficiencies. A lot of this is sidewalk repairs, as well as some drainage repairs, failing scuppers, valley gutters, et cetera, to kind of help improve drainage. This is part of our city's pavement maintenance program that includes things like curb gutter, sidewalks, and handicap ramps. The project was advertised on July 23rd and 30th of this year. We received one bid for this project on August 17th, 2023, from CLM Earth Movers in the amount of $648,302.25. The engineer's estimate was $655,245. In lieu of the fact that the singular bid came in under the engineer's estimate, staff met and determined that we would move forward with this process. We did have three attendees at our pre-bid meeting, but only one bidder chose to submit a bid for this project. Staff has received written confirmation of the bid from CLM Earth Movers. Verification of their license, bonding references, and past performance of previous public works projects has been completed and deemed satisfactory. The city's standard construction contract will be used for the project, and funding for the project is budgeted in FY '24 from the Streets Fund. And with that, I would be happy to answer any questions.
Councilman Moore.
Thank you, Mayor. Tim, I just have a question. Recently, we had a, an executive meeting, and of course, I can't discuss the contents of that meeting, but we were talking about sidewalk repairs.
Oh, please.
And it was just mentioned that we only had a budget of like $288,000 a year or something like that for sidewalk repair, and that it was hard to get to all the issues in the city where sidewalks were raised or had sunk in, and it created a trip and fall hazard. So I'm just curious how, if we have this annual budget, but all of a sudden we have this ability to do all of these repairs. I'm very pleased, and I'm very supportive of it. And I think there's a real need for this in our city, but it just kind of surprises me, because I recently attended a pedestrian bicycle traffic advisory committee where I was representing a constituent's concern that we needed a sidewalk on Wetstein between Ruth Street and Willow Creek, which is by the high school. We have an extensive amount of travel on that street, and there's no sidewalk on either side of the road. And it's like, oh, there's no budget for sidewalks in the city. But all of a sudden, this is coming forward just a few weeks later. So I was curious how that happened.
And this program is primarily to do with existing structures and maintenance. So it's, it's structures that have, that have some age under them, they have failed for whatever reason. A lot of the drainage structures is not too different than what we talked about Yavapai Hills. Drainage over the years has eroded, either undermined something, and so the concrete is failing. So we go in, so this, this program is primarily for repairs. A road like Wetstein would be a, basically a full capital project reconstruct type project, because in order to put sidewalks, it's a rural road, no curb and gutter. So to do a project like that would be a full reconstruct, meaning new curb gutter and sidewalk.
Thank you. I just hope that maybe someday that will come forward, because I think there's a need for that in our community.
Yes, sir. I'm familiar with the discussion, so.
Councilmember Rusin.
Thank you. Tim, I have a question about the intersection of LaRue Street and South Granite Street. I believe that's where the Lazy G is and Granite Creek. And I was just going to ask, what, what kind of work were you planning on, on doing there?
I wish I had the exact answer for every sheet in the plan set. I don't, but I'd be more than happy to get back to you on, after the meeting, and email you what we're, what we're doing in that particular intersection. We are in so many areas, I'm familiar with a lot of what we're doing, but I'm not, not in every particular area in detail.
Okay.
So I apologize.
Thank you.
Mayor Broten.
Tim, kind of in the same vein of what Eric was talking about, but more specific to this project, what is the process for, and I'm sure you probably told me this before, so I apologize for asking this question again, but what is the process for identifying and prioritizing sidewalks or, you know, roadways that need to do this? Is it similar to the way we do the pavement kind of rehabilitation projects, or how does it work?
It isn't currently. A lot of it is public feedback. It's staff out in the field, just identifying locations. One of the other things we do, too, is when we find minor issues, we have, and we've brought this to council a couple of times, the sidewalk grinding program, where we find areas that are just, they're minor, but they're still a bit of a trip hazard. So we can do a grinding project, which will, saves us a lot of money and buys us some time. If it does look like it's going to be a major failure, we'll go in and fix it. One of the goals for the next, when we survey the entire city versus not just surveying the road and the road surface, but the opportunity to survey our sidewalks, our handicap ramps, our curb and gutter, basically anything within our right of way that's part of our overall program that we manage, will be part of the survey that they do.
So if I'm hearing you right, currently, it's kind of a little bit of an ad hoc measurement system of determining it from either staff feedback or community feedback. And then going forward, you're looking to kind of standardize to something a little bit more in, within line of what we do with pavement. Is there a standard that exists that can say, and I, again, I'm thinking of like kind of the pavement. I know when you've talked about pavement, oh, it's down to this level, we can, you know, and I imagine it's a similar kind of idea, too, is we want to do maintenance before we have to just totally repair the sidewalk altogether.
I, I'm not aware that there's a PCI-type
Yeah, that PCI.
-type measurement that we use for asphalt that you would see for sidewalks. And the other element about, especially about sidewalks, that is different than, than most other elements in the right of way, is a sidewalk adjacent to a property is the property owners to maintain. So one of the first steps when we see things like this is we will identify that, notify the property owner. Some property owners choose to fix it, some property owners choose to ignore us. We will still go in and try and fix that, and then we'll take other recourses to try and recoup the cost. But it is a little bit different animal in that, like I said, that it is the property owners, the adjacent property owners to maintain.
Gotcha. Thank you.
Councilwoman Ken Tellme.
Thank you, Mayor. Tim, I just wanted to thank you again as a proponent for the downtown area. I mean, these kind of small projects in some of these older neighborhoods, I just can't even tell you what a difference it makes. I mean, just looking at them, improving them, the access, but supporting the commerce, the businesses, getting, getting back and forth. And we want to be able to promote, you know, our bike lanes and walkers. These are, these just go so far. I mean, even more than what, what money we're spending on them, that it's, there's just untold layers that it's so good for the, you know, the historic areas and promoting the revitalization. So I want to thank you for promoting that and, and actually doing it, because we've had, as you know, years and years of deferred maintenance in some of those areas. But when Kathy mentioned the Brew House, I think it is, is it G&amp;J or what's it called? Lazy G.
Lazy G.
I've been there several times. I can't, I don't know. I mean, that's going to, that area alone, they've become so popular. And, you know, just getting back and forth, it's going to be nice to have curbs and gutters. So thanks again.
Yeah, Tim, I was a little bit curious. This is not a small contract.
No, sir.
But the fact that you had three people or three companies there at your pre-bid discussion, did you get any feedback about why no one else contributed?
Not really. And, and we saw something similar happen when we took the Prescott Library project to, out to bid a few years ago. In that instance, we only had one bidder attend the pre-bid meeting, and at that time, we chose not to advertise it. I feel like that gives the contractor an absolute unfair advantage, or the ability to take advantage of us. That's when we decided to combine it with the American Legion project, and those two projects together got some interest. Sometimes projects like this, when you're dancing all over town, it's difficult. Contractors want to be kind of in one central location. They don't make money driving from central Prescott to north Prescott. So I think there's a little bit of element of that. It's just, it's not, it's not glamorous work. It's a little tedious in setting up and, setting up forms and pouring concrete in small locations. You're not pouring in large batches. So I think that, that has some element of it. And just the fact that there are still so many contractors that are very, very busy in town with very large projects.
Well, it's good to see it came in under the engineer's estimate. Any other questions or comments? I'll entertain a motion.
Mayor, I move that we approve city contract number 2024-073.
Second.
Motion is second. Please vote.
Pass the 7-0.
All right, we're moving on to Item 11E.
Thank you, Mayor and Council. The next item is for the preliminary plat for the Lux Locker condo storage facility located in the Deepwell Ranch area on about 6.8 acres at the southeast corner of State Route 89 and Deepwell Ranch Road. And we have George Worley here today to kind of give us the overview.
Thank you, City Manager. Mayor, Council, this is a proposal for a preliminary plat. It is for a condominium version of a storage facility. This is a little different than we mostly see here, but we do have a few others that are very similar to it. The proposal is for, the location proposal is for the facility to be accessed off of Dell's Ranch Road, which is the eastbound leg of the roadways that come off of the Ruger Roundabout. That area is in close proximity to the airport, as you can see from the aerial photo we have up. Because of that, we had some concerns about some of the design of the project and making sure that the individual units could not be occupied residentially. The CCNRs that were provided by the developer specifically prohibit that, but sometimes nature finds a way. If water's available, there may be some kind of possibilities there. So one of the things we looked at when they came to us for the condominium plat is the requirements under our land development code and the general engineering standards that require water service to individual lots. In creating a condominium, each unit becomes legally a lot, per our codes. So through a process, working with Public Works, Public Works Director has the ability to waive the requirement to extend water service to each lot through a waiver process. They proposed that. The city staff certainly supported it. We do not want to see any kind of residential uses in this area. At some point in the future, when the airport vicinity overlay district gets approved, that overlay district will establish the impact zones in this area as impact zone three, which does not allow residential uses. So we opposed any opportunity for such. The developers didn't want residential uses either, and didn't want the added expense of infrastructure to provide water to units that wouldn't be allowed to connect to those units. So that worked out relatively well. Through the rest of the process, we simply looked at all of the standard requirements for commercial development and for subdivision plats, and it meets all of those requirements for preliminary plat. City staff from all departments have looked at it, traffic engineering, the airport, planning staff, and of course, Public Works for utility infrastructure into, and supporting the area. At this point, staff has no concerns, and we're looking for council's action on the preliminary plat. Oh, and we took this to our planning commission and got a recommendation in favor of it at the end of June. I apologize, I think I left that out of your staff report. We do have representatives from the developer here. I would be happy to answer any questions you have from planning side or city side, and the developers are here to answer design questions. Thank you.
Councilmember Rusin.
Thank you. As you can see, this is a very prominent corner, and it's at the entrance to our terminal. And I've had a lot of feedback from the community that our terminal has no proper signage, that it's very easy to miss the turn. And once you do make the turn, there's a little residential street sign that says Airport Road. There's, there's absolutely no signage for the terminal. And I would like to ask that since the people are going to be seeing nothing but a sea of mini storages, that it's time that we get proper signage for the terminal on the corner by the, yes, this is, this is going to make it harder to get to the terminal. So we need proper signages by the roundabout and also at the other end where you turn to go into the airport. Thank you.
Thank you, Mayor. Hey, George, I think I read in my packet, and I'm trying to find it here. I can't put my finger on it right now, but, so the owner has decided to do one water meter instead of the individual water meters for each condo?
Correct. It's, it would be a master metered facility with water, sorry, master metered facility with water available at common areas, not available to each individual unit.
Right, because I remember when he originally came, I believe he proposed bathrooms in each one of these units, and that's gone away now.
There, there've been a series of stages in the development of this. It came in originally as a single site with no ownership scheme. It would have been owned by a single entity and rented out, and that changed along the way. And there were a couple of other changes that occurred along the way.
Thank you. I just wanted to find out about that. I know I read it somewhere. I just can't put my finger. Thank you.
Any other comments or concerns? I'd like to hear from Dr. Sabata if there's any impact on future airport development or within the vicinity of the airport itself. And we're awful close to the Crosswind Runway there.
Thank you, Mayor. Thank you, Council. Sorry. Yeah, we've reviewed the plans, and we're very pleased that they've added in the restrictions relating to residential and not encouraging the water in each unit. We could easily see where you could pull in an RV in there and somebody would live there for six months. So it'd be pretty easy to do. So we have reviewed the language. It's quite a lengthy set of CCNRs, and it does have several elements in there where you can't conduct businesses or you can't do residential. So that's very helpful. From the impact zone perspective, we're pleased to see that they are submitting for the necessary airspace requirements. So that is going through the process, and we will have those on record before it actually gets a building permit issued. So the airport does feel comfortable with this project.
Are there any future expansions or other concerns that we, the airport would need to be assured of as far as, I don't know, poles or any other thing that might have an impact on height?
And that is actually being addressed through the airspace evaluation process. So we feel very comfortable that this has been addressed through the process, but we'll make sure that all items are uploaded before the final building permits are issued. And if there's obscuration of the signage on the way in, that's something we'll take a look at in the next round of plans. So I think that's a good idea. We have had concerns expressed on both the roundabout and that way in of having trouble finding the terminal building. So we'll make sure that that's addressed. So thank you.
Okay. Councilmember Rusin.
Thank you. Since we've been talking about stormwater a lot recently, raising our awareness, I've been out to this parcel. And what's the plan for all the runoff off of these mini storages and all the concrete? Is it going to be a lot of hardscaping there? Pavement? Is there going to be a detention basin, or is it just going to wash out the road there?
The plan is to wash out the road.
Thank you. That's, that sounds great.
I'm sorry. The, the, the part of the plan so far that we've looked at includes grading and drainage. That permit's already been issued. It does include an onsite detention basin. It includes a number of stormwater capture facilities. Most of our basins are detention. They don't retain the water. They detain it temporarily, and then it flows on into the other stream network that's nearby, ultimately into bottleneck wash, I believe, is, is the ultimate goal. So that, that's been very thoroughly looked at. We do have a lot of concern because the roadways are all new in the area, and we want to make sure that we maintain that infrastructure.
Okay, thank you.
Okay, if there's no other concerns, I'll entertain a motion.
Mayor, I move that we approve PLN 23-001.
Second.
Motion is second. Please vote. Well, very well, that concludes our voting meeting today. I do want to close this with a quote from another one of our founding fathers, especially since we've just issued a proclamation for Constitution Week. So this is from Alexander Hamilton. "If it be asked, what is the most sacred duty and the greatest source of our security in our republic, the answer would be an inviolable respect for the Constitution and laws." This meeting is adjourned.